Oh, this workshop closed at 6:04 PM. And with that, I will now go to officially the call to order.
Oh, I don't, oh, sorry, thank you for reminding me.
Gotcha.
I'm gonna miss my reminder.
I think the, thank the council for your input.
They're gonna be gone.
Okay, we're good to go. All right, I thank all of you for the work and energy and time you put into the discussion during the workshop. We will now officially call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order at 6:05 PM on the this, the 29th day of November, 2018. And we will, of course, proceed with an official roll call.
Okay. Judy Costello.
I'm still here.
Jason Bailey.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander Hunter.
Here.
And Ken Smith.
Also present. So, I would suggest to the council, would agree, that inasmuch as we have the pledge of allegiance sixty minutes ago, that we defer with the pledge at tonight's council meeting and proceed to the mayor's report. Do we have a consensus? Yeah, I can see that. All right, excellent. You know, the first thing you note on it is that in the previous meeting or two, I've been concerned about the weeds infiltrating the landscaping effort by the post office. And we did apply an herbicide to it. I've been studying it closely and noted that it is working, as we'd hoped. So, I'm confident that by spring, we'll have a rush field of grass, that we will then struggle to keep alive for, during the rains. But that will be a digital jump when we get to it. All right, the second thing is we got a notice today that Civil West is ready to issue the final set of design plans for our waste treatment facility. And they invited me to encourage any council members who have any final thoughts on it, which you've been doing for the last two, three weeks, I know some have presented those, and we appreciate that, to convey any other design thoughts you might have to our city clerk, and we'll process them through Civil West. So, and they need those ASAP. So, any thoughts you've got, feel free to share with the city clerk. That's all I have.
Would you call in on the trees?
Well, I haven't had any new information on the trees. Did you, would you like to elaborate on that?
Pastor Tracy said he's the one that sent you that message.
Over the TV?
He was the one.
Oh.
And he said those trees are readily available for between $59, or we could pick the one that was $79. They will ship them directly to us, and then they can go in the ground. So, perhaps you could chat with him, because he wanted to know where the trees were.
Well, yeah.
But he said no.
All there was was a little, a ten-word tweet I got, and there was no name or identifying information on it. It was not a tweet, it was a text.
That would've been Pastor Tracy.
Okay.
And I think he said, "They're not going to be big trees. They're going to start out being like five to seven-foot trees."
Oh, wow.
And they'll be shipped, and so, the whole thing. So, and if you decide with him or whatever to do that, would you let me know?
Absolutely.
So that Carol Brum and I can get on board to get ours at the same time, and yours?
Perfect.
Okay.
You got a deal.
All right, perfect.
Thank you for that.
Those are five to seven-foot trees?
Right.
And what are they again? Just?
Red.
The red maple?
Eastern red bud.
Eastern red bud.
Eastern red bud.
Whatever the exact ones that were.
They're beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
I think it was a wonderful selection to make. So, let's get them. Get them in. Okay. All right, that's all I had. The council reports.
First off, walk and knock, Saturday, December the first. Please have your bag out on your porch. Also, the Lions Club will have a tent set up on the corner of 506 and A Street from 10 to 1, and they will be taking your food there. If you don't feel comfortable, then you're not going to be at home.
Okay.
So, there's that. And then the second thing that I wanted to do is sort of a little rant, and it's not directed at staff, and it's kind of a request I'd like to make. I find, and I don't know about the rest of the council, I find it very difficult to get my packet the day before council meeting. Okay? This was a lot to absorb. I was up last night doing it. I don't choose to do that, okay? I was wondering if, say, starting in January, if we couldn't maybe have our packets, say, Tuesday morning would make me really happy, unless, unless there is an emergency.
If we can do it, we will.
I would appreciate that.
Now, that was not a rant.
Oh.
In my opinion, was a reasonable request.
How much of a raise would we have to give?
Yeah.
What's a CBA hit done?
Yes. She wants to have that, please. But I didn't want to direct that to staff, because I know that you're the man in charge.
Absolutely, thank you.
So, if you could please handle that for me, I would appreciate it.
Yes, and we will ensure that we do the very best of our abilities.
Thank you.
But it would be possible, you think, to get it by Friday? Because we usually go over it on Thursday, the week before, and sometimes we can not.
I would be really happy with Monday morning. I come in, usually at nine.
I shoot for Tuesday morning, is what I shoot for. I can shoot for as early as you want. That just, all that means is that we'll have to push everything back. I mean, I can do whatever you want.
But say no one, take that.
Thank you. I will do my best, thank you, whatever you need.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Any other?
Also, at that, the Lions Club and the Little Crane Cafe have their giving tree up and are taking donations for the good baskets, again, for Christmas season.
Is that for the kids in the neighborhood?
Kids and the families that need it, yeah.
How many families do you have?
I believe there's eleven this year.
And where do you want the donations taken? Maybe it had something to do with the grocery store or the restaurant?
For the giving tree?
Yes.
Well, the giving tree, it's all at the restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah. Same food donation, or monetary.
Would it help to have, do you have a box or a sign in City Hall?
I do. That's a great idea.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
We're okay with that, right?
Yeah.
You can handle the walk-ins if the people are aware. We'll, we'll make that known, maybe on the board or something. Okay. Excellent, thank you. Other council reports? Okay, then let's proceed with the agenda approval from our city council meeting, November 29th.
I made a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 11/29/2018.
Heard the motions, bid by Mrs. Costello, to approve the city council meeting minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. And now, the minutes approval. Good grief, I had it totally misstated here. That was for the agenda approval.
Yes, that was the agenda.
So, I'm sorry.
I think you said that, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna rephrase it. No, I didn't. I said minutes approval.
Oh.
So...
Why is it agenda?
Well, if you thought that, let's correct it on the minutes for our coming meeting.
I was just thinking agenda.
I was talking text. Okay. Now, let's proceed with the minutes approval.
I need to interrupt here, because I noticed an error in the minutes about half an hour before council meeting. So, I would suggest that we wait to approve it until the next council meeting. We'll do two sets of minutes. I'll tell you what it is, that was page seven, the very last page, the last item, number four.
City clerk's report?
Yes. I thought I made that report at the last meeting, but apparently I didn't. Apparently, this is, that information that I put in there, I thought was what I had reported to council, but that's what I'm reporting to council tonight.
Oh.
So, that's wrong. That shouldn't even be in there. I must've said something totally different.
Sounds crazy.
I know, Mike was like, "You didn't tell us that." And I said, "Yeah, I did at the last meeting." And so, I went back and listened to the recording, and sure enough, that's not what I said. So, I need to fix that.
What about the crew's mission?
Well, I need to put in the correct, I need to put in the correct information. I didn't have time to do that yet. So, if you don't mind, we will just bump that, bump this and do two sets of minutes at the next meeting, if that's okay with you. I'll make that correction.
Can we just cross it off and just go on our...
But what I'm saying is, I have to put the right information in, and I don't have the right information in there yet, so.
No. I would agree with your suggestion that we just table this, and you'll have to do two.
And we'll bring it back for the next one.
Does that need to be a motion?
Uh, I don't know if it needs to be a motion.
I don't think so.
I know, I'm trying to make the motion that we table the minutes.
Okay. She made a point.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion tabled.
Okay, you heard the motion, table that minutes approval meeting. Seconded by Mike Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Bachelor approval for first half of November...
Nope, end of November.
End of November 29th. You should have this, is this the sheet of paper, or is this, this leftover?
That is the sheet of paper.
I'll make a motion that we approve the voucher totals for November...
Wait, yours is yellow, that's wrong.
It's pink.
No, yours should be written in.
Oh.
Mine wasn't.
Mine wasn't. I know, because you guys got yours before I have my totals. The rest of them, I think, they're left after. Is it the same? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay.
Continue.
Sorry.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the voucher totals for November 29, 2018. The first half of November is $112,163.84. The end of November, $160,416.40. And the total for November 2018, $272,580.24.
Okay, we, you've heard possibly, Mr. Bailey's motion to submit the approving the voucher totals is read. Now, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Special reports?
Oh, I forgot to take the cardboard off.
We were supposed to delete that.
No, I was supposed to delete that, I'm sorry. No cardboard.
Okay, yeah. So, you draw a line through that, and likely have a report on our next council meeting. City business? Okay, let us proceed with that. Public hearing is our first agenda item.
If you don't mind, Mayor, can I just remind everybody? If you want to speak during the public hearing, we'd appreciate you to put your name on here so we know. Is there anybody who didn't get their name on who would like to?
Okay. And, and are we allowed to talk to them?
Well, the public hearing, the council, is to sit and absorb.
Okay.
That's how it works.
Okay. You needed the consent road.
Yep.
No, you're not supposed to.
Well, with that...
It's a listening time. The council can talk all they want on item number two. We talk about the budget and the tax levy, so, okay.
So, we'll have one person signed up at this point to make public comments.
Well, but we need to establish a time, right?
Right, so that's why I'm telling you how many people want to speak.
At least we have one.
Let me do it.
Yes, please.
Can I make a motion that we open the public hearing for 2019 final budget hearing for 10 minutes?
Okay, we've got a motion.
And if we need longer, we'll go longer, but if we need shorter, we'll go shorter.
Okay, we've heard a motion filed by Mr. Bailey to allocate 10 minutes for the public hearing, or less, depending on the contributions, or more if it is needed. Have I captured that?
Yep.
All right, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Okay, with that, then I, oh, yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you, Jill. All right, then with that, we will formally begin this public hearing regarding the 2019 city budget at 6:19 PM.
This person, our only person, Cindy Radcliff, we'd like to invite you to come up here.
I'd love that.
Yep.
I suppose I do watch and call. I got 10 minutes missing. Hang on. There's light on.
Doesn't mean that we want you to take it all.
Mine is pretty much the same as what I said last, last two weeks ago. I'm disappointed in this budget. There's very little, if anything, that impacts the daily lives of the people of this city. There's, the amount of money for the roads has gone down by $500, which probably is fair, because you only spent $300 on roads last year, and you had $2,000 to spend. I mean, not counting A Street, I realize that you got a grant for that, $750,000. But I'm talking about the average roads in this town. You spent very little, if anything, on the roads. And I think that we have a lot of potholes, we have a lot of things that need to be fixed. Spend the money that you budgeted for it. The other thing is, the one thing that does kind of impact our lives that is in here, and the only thing I could find that helps us, is the Fourth of July, that everybody seemed to enjoy last year, that we're probably not even going to get this year, because it's too much money. You know, so, this is our money. It's a quarter of a million dollars. And you didn't even have additional security lighting put in here. You know, the lighting that you have around town might be sufficient, but more lighting means more light on criminals. You know, I can name a couple houses that I have to have spotlights on them. But still, this money should be spent, the majority of it, on our behalf, not just for attorneys and city planners and the staff. It should be spent on things that help our everyday lives. Those dumpsters, out of a quarter million dollars, you guys can't find $2,000 to have dumpsters come down. Not everybody has a truck. Not everybody can lift up. I know many people in this town that couldn't lift up a refrigerator or dishwasher to get it into a dumpster or into a truck to get it to the city dump. You are always harping, all of you, about cleaning up this city. Well, let's help them a little bit. Let's, let's give them a little bit of money, and it's a small amount, out of a quarter million dollars, so they can just bring it down or have help bringing it down and put it in a dumpster. You know, let's give them a little bit more lighting. But you guys haven't done anything. I'm not even sure that you guys have really studied this and seen how much. And when it comes to raising salaries, us that are on social security, we're getting, what, 2.3% raise? You shouldn't be given any more than that to anybody, if not, nothing at all. Thank you, Jill, for, you know, saying that you wouldn't take ones. But, you know, the, the point is, is that you should, the people that get social security, that pay into those taxes, there's a lot of people in this town that make very little. You're raising taxes, you're raising sewer fees, the water's going up. A lot of people are within 10 bucks of that. And now, you, you do nothing for them that they can see every day. They can't even get a pothole fixed. So, I'm disappointed in this. I was hoping that maybe somebody, one of you, would have said, "Let's cut a couple expenses somewhere and possibly do something," but that's not going to be. So, election is 2019, people. Let's see if we can find somebody that will help us.
Ouch.
Hey, four, four openings. Just four guys come out.
Our social security, we're gonna mess it.
Okay, well, that was it. Then...
Make a motion to end the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Well, we had a motion submitted by Mr. Parsons to conclude the public hearing, with comments being said. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it. Jason Bailey, you seconded it already.
Mr. Bailey, you were serious. You were quick. All right, then with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. So, the public hearing is concluded. That was our third official one, and we will now reconvene our official city council meeting.
So, I'm sorry, you called the public hearing, are you adjourn the public hearing?
Yes.
So, what's the time for the adjournment?
At 6:23.
Okay, thank you.
And we will reconvene our city, official city council meeting at 6:24. Now, item number two, the council to consider Resolution 16-2018, this is a 2019 property tax levy. So, as Mr. Schei has briefly noted, that action is required in this evening's meeting. So, I would open the city council meeting up to your deliberation on that agenda.
I need to know what is our percentage of present rent? Where do we, where are we on the big charts? On the big, where is my big chart?
Like 2.57?
What, 4.85? Hold on, I have to figure somewhere in one of these numbers.
I thought we were 6.19%. Probably did.
I think we're at 2.57.
Doesn't give us a percent. Oh, yeah, that's 2.573682193315. That's last year's levy rate. I, I have no idea, this is the most, taxes are the most confusing thing. I have not been able to figure all of that out. I don't know how that 2.57%, uh, 2.57%, it's on, it's on this form that I gave to you guys. I don't know what that's 2.57% of, but that's what it is. That's what the, if we were to keep it exactly the same, that's the rate, which is $74,450.26, which is the same as 2018. That's if you didn't change anything. Every city is allowed a 1% increase every year, plus a of their bank capacity that they've saved up over the years when they haven't used that 1%. Right now, the city has 6.6% bank, plus the 1% additional that's allowed every year. So, the total allowable, the highest lawful levy that the city can levy is to increase it by 7.6%. And that's what you see in that workshop document that I gave you. And that is what is proposed in this budget, is to increase it to the highest lawful levy.
And have you calculated what that would be?
Yes, it's in, yeah. That would increase the levy by $5,700 in total for the year. If you look at this in your workshop form, Joe asked that I provide this again. If you look down at the bottom, it shows the percent of increase, and then it shows that how much it would cost each citizen per $100,000 in value on their property. So, if their property was worth $100,000, and you raised it the full 7.6%, it would cost them $18.38 more a year. So, that's about a dollar and a half, a little less than a dollar and a half a month increase in the property tax, if they had a $100,000 house.
So, in 2015, when we started this, Joe, we used it for codification.
Yes.
Yes. And in December the 31st of this year, it expires?
It does not expire. It maintains the current levy amount unless we reduce it.
Unless we reduce it, okay. And what, do we have it earmarked for anything?
It is not. In the current budget, in the, in the proposed budget that we have in front of us, it, it just rolled into the general fund and then got dispersed into the amount, into everything.
Oh, okay. I don't like that idea.
That is funding that could be allocated to industry.
I would love to see it if it happens. I think I would rather see it earmarked if it happens, but I'm not sure. Anyway, thank you for the explanation.
If, if we, like we thought we would be able to do, wipe the tax off that we added for the codification, would that go into a bank? Would it go into the bank, or would it be gone?
That percentage would be banked again.
It would be banked again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Whatever, if you went back down, if you went, if you lowered the levy, then it would, that percentage that you lowered it will go back into the bank capacity. So, you could raise it again later. You don't lose it, it's not like use it or lose it kind of thing, but, yes. That's, I asked specifically about that question. I called the, the assessor's office and asked her specifically, what happens if they do decide to lower it, what happens to that? Do we lose it? She said, "Nope." Because what she's, there's a, the highest lawful levy is the highest amount is already set for what the city can, can levy. And if you don't use that, then that amount is banked. We have to do an ordinance to bank it, or a resolution to bank it, so that we don't lose it in the future, but, but, yeah, it's still there. So, you can lower it, raise it, you could lower way down 99% if you wanted, and that whole 99% will be banked. But I don't recommend that.
I mean, I hope the council's sensitive to the fact that unlike virtually every other community in Lewis County, that's where we generate, it's the only revenue generating thing of any significance in this community. So, we have residents, properties, and we've raised them one time in the last three years. So, that's just that in mind, and do you want to have some flexibility, that's $5,700. That's something for, to take under serious consideration. Buy a lot of coal patch, that Fort Worth pigment boat.
That Fort Worth? Well, doesn't, I don't know about this, because our water went up in October by $2.35. We're going to discuss the sewer increase. Um, we're getting, yes, garbage, do you have garbage bill? Garbage went up. PUDs going up.
I believe we're going to re-discuss the garbage, maybe, or didn't Jeff say that he was okay till the beginning of the year, maybe, and then he was going to possibly...
That's what he indicated to me.
Yeah.
So, I think that's... We just upped it 50 cents, but I thought we weren't going to do that for, I thought we would keep it there for a couple of years now. Because that was the increase. I don't know how to...
I don't, I don't know how.
Yeah, I can't.
Can I make a comment, or do I have to stand and buy the $95?
Just ready to get our ticket.
Okay.
Would you like to hear a comment? Yes, feel free.
Two or three months ago, I got a garbage bill. Three times the amount I only paid. I have one, one thing I never learned. I stopped Jeff, and he says, "Well, there was somebody on the other end of town, and his name sounded like, or he had five cans out." I said, "On $443.10 a month, I can't afford his garbage." And you know, that was $400 and something dollars? No, no, my social security. So, I, Jeff was lucky he didn't get jerked out of the truck, because I was really ticked off. And then I hear somebody says, "Well, they don't pay sewer, they don't pay garbage, they don't pay anything." Some people in town. Why do we have to pay for these deadbeats? But when he said, "Because my name sounds like somebody over here in town, and five garbage cans out," I got a little ticked off.
Well, didn't he correct it?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he corrected, right there, because I took the bill and went like this, and he's right, you go to the money machine, pay. It's just the idea of what...
Well, yeah, it was a mistake.
I'm on very limited income since my husband died. I lost more than half my income, and I get this bill, and I'm sitting there, "Man, I already got white hair."
Well, yeah, that, that happens.
We don't need to scare, we don't need to scare. I mean, somebody says, "Our, our social security is going up." Well, I might get $445 a month.
And then Medicare goes up, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, I have Kaiser, and it sucks a lot of money.
Okay, all right. We appreciate that Landre have filled your financial district.
Well, I just thought it was kind of funny. I mean, I wasn't funny until after I talked to Jeff.
Thank you. Does another comment, counsel?
Did you guys at the end of the table ask what our... How do you guys feel?
There's so many other people that have opinions. I'm listening to their opinion. Well, Judy wasn't quite done, I don't think. You were still saying something.
Well, no, I'm just... You know, me personally, it's going to be with all these little two thirty-fives here and whatever, sixty-five dollars more. I don't know. I just... I thought we... I thought when we raised that in 2015, it was for a specific reason. And then we were going to bank it or drop it or whatever back. And I thought that's what we kind of agreed when I was up here before. To bring it back up now and not have an actual reason or earmarked for something disturbs me.
Well, and there's a bigger issue to consider than that.
Oh.
That well, the entire budget that we are looking at hinges on raising it the full amount. That seven point six percent is built into everything that you're looking at.
Well, there lies a problem.
And so if... While the budget is not... While the budget does not need to be certified today by us, it's something to certainly be... To consider. If we do not utilize it, we need to reduce expenditures by the fifty-seven hundred dollars that we would gain. An observation.
Now, that was one of the movies we're going to pay your water bill.
Yeah, and you know, I think the part that we're all forgetting is everything is going up. And not just for everybody. Everything is going up. You know, in 2015, I paid my workers a hundred dollars a day, and I was fine. And now I'm at twelve fifty an hour, and it's about almost two hundred dollars a day. Everything goes up. And so what that means, and I'm just talking personally for me and for my customers, that means that to get on my ride, it went up two dollars, about 2016. And so it all goes out. And you know, the government has voted in Washington to make the minimum wage fifteen dollars an hour. It's going to affect everyone. You know, I mean, our workers are not that far above a McDonald's worker in Seattle. And it's... And so I don't know... Me personally, I want to take that one percent or whatever it was and drop it off. But I also don't have a way to make it up and make it work. I don't want... Because... And I think everybody forgets that when we raise these things, it's on us too.
It's on everybody.
It's on everybody. And I mean, we're not immune to the tax rates. But so I don't know what to do, but I do know that it's going to get tighter for everybody. And...
I have a comment to that. You and Joe and me and Jason can all go to work tomorrow, and we're all going to get our wage. Is this not true?
This is not true.
Okay. We're thinking about Joe and me and Jason are all going to go to work tomorrow. We're going to get our paycheck on Friday like we always do.
But I'm not going to work forty-one hours next week because my property taxes are up about...
But I could probably throw a rock right now and hit a couple of people that they're... They can't go to work tomorrow, and they're not going to have any more money to add to their monthly budget. And I think that's where my problem is. A lot of people in our community don't have the option that Joe and I and Jason have of working right now.
So do we just increase your taxes and my taxes and Joe's taxes?
It already happens to me. I don't have the choice over that.
Can I make a PSA announcement? Can I make a PSA announcement that's kind of related to that? Because I've been thinking about that. I've been thinking about it. I listen to what you guys say. And I've been wondering how many people realize that the county assessors have a senior exemption for their property taxes.
Right.
If you make under a certain amount, you senior citizens and disabled persons, if you're over sixty-one, if you have a low income, you can get some of your taxes wiped off, and they will freeze your taxes the rest of your life. So I called and asked them about it because I knew they had that program. And so I got these flyers and put the telephone number up there for anybody who's interested in that. If you think you might qualify, it has the amounts that you have to make, you know, for a year or whatever. But call them and talk to them because they will walk you through the application process. They will sit down and fill it out with you, help you do everything. I know that for a fact because I happen to know somebody who works there. It tells me that he sits and does this and helps people get their taxes. So if you are a senior disabled, just this is a good time to let people know. I'm going to have these at City Hall. So I'm going to put them out so that people can see that when they come. Because so many people don't realize that that option is out there, that they can freeze it. So even if the city raises your taxes, yours won't change. Yours will stay the same. So you don't have to...
Because the city still also offered the discount rate, a low income for the sewer and the water.
Yes, yes.
So there are options, many options out there for people to...
Yes. And the Water Department does as well.
Knowing that we were going to talk about this, I tried to do some form of rough analysis. How many senior aged, low-income social security recipients we have in our community?
Oh, good.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we discovered that it's impossible to statistically extract a definitive number from the information we get from the bills and such. But based upon the feedback we get from impacted individuals in that category and those who've applied for or receiving the reduced waste treatment bills, are... My figure is that there are probably eleven or twelve.
Oh, you got to do it.
No, I kid you not.
Eleven and a whole ton.
I'd like to hear feedback on that, but...
Wait, I need to talk back. I'm hanging with them all day long, Ken.
You have eleven coming?
Oh, I have more than eleven.
You have a number that you would care to share with the council?
You know, I'm... I would... I would probably sit here and say, "I'll bet you there's fifty percent of VEDR right now that is in that category." That's right. You know, I... Yeah, I will feel that wrong, honestly.
I know a number of the people in this community. Many don't go to your... Excuse me. Pardon. I'm well acquainted with a goodly number of residents of this community. And I know there are many retired people. But the classification was the lower economic levels. So I'd love to get some feedback on it.
Oh, cool.
But it's just for the purposes of this conversation. When we hear that most of the people, which I've heard over the course of the last couple of months, I think that might be an exaggeration. But I don't want to diminish the impact that it has because it's real.
And some of the questions they ask on those forms are very invasive, very.
They are, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm an ex-government employee, and I don't like to mess with this crap that's going on nowadays. Sorry, ladies.
Yeah, maybe true. But you've got to give up something if you want to get the benefits that they offer. And I'm on a fixed income as well. And so I know what it's like to see your income stream diminished. But like you were saying...
I wish mine was fixed. It keeps dropping.
Right, that's your point.
And if your spouse dies or you die, she uses half of it.
Right, it's a problem. Take another comment or is that...
Yes.
What is low income? If you had to ballpark it, what is considered low income for a year?
Could you share with them off the top of your head?
Is it on that?
I can tell you what this considers low income. I mean, this says forty thousand or less household income.
And how does the city compare with the sewer bill and...
Our... Do you remember? Tell me what the...
The new one is like eleven thousand.
Eleven, yeah. If you... For one person makes eleven thousand or twelve thousand a year that they qualify. Ours is very, very low for the sewer, low-income sewer rate.
That's something for the council to consider.
We could talk about that some more. But this is property tax, so...
Yes, and let me inject here too, like we've done in years past. The budget reflects the seven point six rate. You don't have to go seven point six. You can cut it in half, go two point five or something like that. But bearing in mind, you're weighing the impact on the budget. We want to do more to improve the quality of life for residents in this community, maintain the value of the property that we've got. So you're wrestling with that. Continue your discussion.
Did the Castle Rock school, did that pass?
No.
It did not pass.
I'm going to say go with seven point six. Is that a motion?
No.
Oh, it's not, okay.
Yeah, the Castle Rock thing would have been five hundred dollars a year out of your pocket.
That would have been unbelievable.
This is twenty dollars a year.
Yeah.
It's a little different.
And Ken? The Census Bureau forms should have all the information you want.
Can we have access?
Social Security?
The Census Bureau. But the last time they did it was in two thousand...
I know they're doing new ones.
Thirteen or two thousand ten or something like that. And I know that...
I've got notices that they're...
Twenty twenty is there coming?
Yes, I've got notices to that effect.
So the information on the Census... The information on the Census right now is pretty much obsolete. I mean, it's changed so much this last couple of years, last few years.
If we really wanted to find out something after 2020 or whatever it is...
Yes.
It should have all that on it because it did when I did it.
Yeah, but the question I've got is, can we access that Census information?
We can access Census, and anybody can.
The information about their earnings.
I don't know. I've never tried. So I don't know what information there is. I know there is Census information available to the public. I don't know what...
I think it behooves us to research that when we have it. That might answer the question because of how many of you can... What salary levels.
But that's only the people who answered the bill. Not anybody answers the Census.
Right, that's true.
That's against the law.
Is it, really?
Yes.
You do get that.
Don't question...
Okay, well, in the spirit of the council meeting and knowing that the objective of this portion of our agenda is to reach a decision. I know you've had feedback in the public. I know you've weighed this out in your minds, hoping that you'll engage in some decisive action.
I suppose everybody's wanting to do the one more percent and make it top seven? What are you guys thinking, Don, or has anybody done thoughts?
The seven point six six, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So what we need as a motion is the dollar amount. So if you want to look at that chart that I gave you, the highest... If you're going to do the highest, you would put in the five thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. That's how you would put it into the motion. If you don't want to do that much, if you want to... I need a dollar amount. Once you give me a dollar amount, then afterwards I'll figure out what the exact percentage is and plug that in. But if you tell us what the dollar amount is that you want to increase. If you want to increase it zero, say zero. If you want to increase it a thousand dollars, you know, however you want to do that, that's what you plug into the motion that I gave you here to read. And then I'll determine what the percentage is exactly.
If we increase this, you say it's already in the budget, but we can't then turn around to the citizens and say, "Okay, we increased your taxes, and this is what we did with the money." Because it's already all mixed into the budget, correct?
But you can still change allocations in the light, I guess. If you want to shift some from the street to the street improvement, you can still do that between now and our next council meeting.
So street improvement or getting dumpsters or helping people clean up their yards. And we can say, "Okay, this is what we did with this increase."
Yeah.
Can...
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Can we bump this to the end of the meeting and talk about the number three that's on there?
You guys can, if you want to.
So you want to...
I think we're almost done.
I don't know, we're this far into it.
Well, the reason I say that is because if you look at last week's minutes that didn't get told to us, we're about to get told that the limb plant thing has an eight hundred dollar a year application fee.
Plus, there could also be a lease charge on top of that.
So we need to make other arrangements?
So we probably need to make other arrangements or keep that in our brains for number two. Does that make sense?
I see what you're saying, okay. I had a whole nother thought on the limb thing.
Oh, okay.
City property somewhere?
Yes, yeah. I had a whole nother thought on the limb thing.
There are options out there.
Yeah.
Park Street?
You can't do that at Park Street. Because it has to be a park. It's... That's the only reason that we have. It has to be a park. You can't use it for other stuff.
We have property at the end of Tenth Street. We were determined.
That's true. There's other places.
Oh, that log spot?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's passed the board.
I don't know. Personally, I didn't want to raise the taxes. I do see the value in it. I still don't want to... But there is value in it as far as like four or things, health city, things like that. I don't know. I'm... At best, I probably want to do half of what the projected total highest increase would be. That would give us an increase of like three thousand dollars in our budget. It would drop a person's per thousand cost down to nine seventy-sixty.
Per hundred thousand.
Which is, yeah.
Per hundred thousand, not per thousand.
But lots and lots of homes in there are right around a hundred thousand dollars. So that's less than a dollar a month increase.
This is because they just bumped our property values way up.
So that's where I'm leaning. I don't think we should go full on. I understand that we should increase some, but that's where I'm leaning. It's other suggestions.
A sense of motion is emerging from here?
I agree with Jason. I think four percent is a good compromise. And then we're only adjusting the budget.
Two thousand, twenty-seven hundred bucks?
Yeah, twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's measurable. It's my opinion.
Be that...
My head hurts. The other end of the table.
I think Jason should make a motion.
Yeah, cool.
I'll make a motion that we raised the tax increase to four percent.
Actually, you can just give me a dollar amount.
A dollar amount.
Give me a dollar amount.
Three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
Increase by twenty-seven, did you say? No, I'm sorry.
Three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents.
Three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twelve... Where is that number coming from?
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Number am I supposed to be looking at?
That's a change.
Oh, yeah.
And then four percent.
Oh, I see. I see what you're saying. Oh, okay, I see where you're at. Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I thought you did that in your head. I was like, wow!
Where did that number come from? Okay. Three thousand, two hundred... Three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents increase over last year's levy.
Wow.
Okay.
You submitted a motion?
Yes, we did.
In the process? Okay. Now, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Daly to approve an increase in the city VEDR property tax in the amount of three thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Do you have a second for that motion?
A second, yeah.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. Any additional conversation on that? Okay, hearing that, call on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is still carried by a permit of vote of four and a negative of one, so duly noted for the minutes. Thank you. It was sensitive, painful, but it was...
That's compromised.
Yeah, it was compromised. Okay, now let's quickly jump to item number three, update on lemon yard waste disposal segment. So, now, I invite our city clerk to give us the latest, we may have already heard it.
I have already heard it, but, but I checked with them, you do have to get a permit. The permit application costs $800 per year, and they said you have to reapply every year, and after the $800, then they'll let you know if there's, if they approve it, then they'll let you know if there is a lease fee on top of that. But they couldn't give me any idea of what the lease fee might be, unless we turn in the $800 application, so...
Can we send them a bill for cleaning up their area?
You can do whatever you need to do.
Mention that part.
We do get to keep our blocks, though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll have to move them, we'll have to move them somewhere.
But not if we get the permit.
If we get the permit, they can stay there, but if we don't...
You're talking about $800 a year just for the application? That's...
Yeah, that's crazy.
When we have property of our own, we can do it all.
It'd take us a lot to...
Yeah.
$5,000 or more.
So can we find out what our options are on city property that we can all go look at?
Yeah, we can do that.
So you want to find out what piece of the property the city owns?
Where the city owns.
I can put together a list of that.
Please, and then we can all go in.
Can we earmark any of this brand-new 4% towards citywide cleanup?
You can.
Yeah, but that would come under a budget thing we can bring up in our next council.
Okay.
Well, if they make a suggestion about it, then I can include it in their final budget numbers. That would be appropriate to discuss under this topic, I would think.
Now, as far as our legal rights, because last time there was all this, well, we have to have insurance, and we have to do this, and we have to do that, if we move it to VEDER property, do we still have to follow all these guidelines as far as what the attorney thinks?
Attorney hasn't said anything about it, it's been the insurance company that we checked with, because that's what I checked on, was whether the insurance, whether our city insurance would cover this type of activity. And they thought that it probably would, but they needed to come out and see the location and the setup and what exactly they have in their plan.
Would that be like the non-city employee running a chipper kind of...
Running a chipper or chainsaw, or, well, people, right, people driving up with their vehicles and, you know, crashing into something or hurting themselves or somebody else, or, you know, there's, there are liabilities involved with it, there's an increased liability. So they, they don't want to give us a blanket yes or no until they see what...
So we probably have to have the area fenced in?
Probably, we'd need to do some safety stuff.
Excuse me.
I'm sure that they will have, definitely have things to say about the processes in place, and they said that the city of Olympia has that kind of a process in place. Theirs, of course, is much bigger, but we could go look at their website and see how they're doing it. They felt like they were doing a good job of managing that type of a situation.
We had recycled...
What we did, we want to comment from the top?
Yeah.
Well, this is not about the wood chipping and stuff, okay. But we had recycled bins down here before. Now, this is going to be for VEDER only, can we have it for VEDER only? We have these recycled bins, we had everybody in three counties throwing their garbage in there and setting them on fire.
Yeah, Mr. Fire.
No, we had them, yeah, we had them on Judy's, where Judy's property is now.
It happens. One more comment?
Can you not just ask the insurance companies what they would require for this type of thing?
I can, sure.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't that be easier?
That's what she did.
No, she said they would have to come out and look, and then we'd have, I just thought maybe we need to have it.
That's just what they suggested, that's what, that's what they suggested needed to happen. I didn't ask them, do you have a list of requirements? I don't know. I could, I could ask them if they have something like that.
It would make it easier, and they would have to come out, we would have to go down there.
At least we can just tell them that, you know.
What happened to our chipper?
We've never had a chipper.
Well, whenever they've been chipping before, because now we're taking it to the city dump and paying them for truckloads, my neighborage.
It was the county, and they got out of that business.
The chipper was, that was granted from the county.
It was borrowed from the county, and the county no longer offers it.
Somebody was down on it by a big chipper and rented it. You come and bring your junk, and we'll charge it so much.
Somebody can make money.
Okay, we better, we've got to rein this in.
We have a plan with the, with the branches that come in, where a pile gets somewhat large, and we will rent a chipper, but we'll be charging $5 per load of truckloads, which is much less than if you haul them anywhere else.
I wasn't hauling them, but he brought a chipper over and chipped mine up, but he took two truckloads down and it cost a $20 truckload.
Yeah, it's expensive. Any of the larger branches that come in, my husband's...
And does she have a big enough chipper?
My husband's going to cut the limbs off, the branches or whatever, cut them in sizes, and then anyone who needs firewood in town, that firewood will be available to them. And with the $5 that we charge to get the branches dropped off, we're hoping that that will someday cut the cost to have, for VEDER to have its own chipper.
Yeah, I got rid of the firewood, and he come over and chipped mine up and things out for him, because then I have yard, I have a third yard.
Okay, excellent. So did we cover the salient talking points?
I'm supposed to give a list of...
What's that?
Did you say everything you needed to say about that limb thing?
Yeah, just...
Line item three.
Yeah, just that, because I didn't know until today that there was the $800 in extra fees on it, so we need to make sure to absorb that.
Well, all right, then, any other comments on that?
Do we need a workshop before we have our next meeting?
I think so.
At this point, I don't have any direction from anybody except that the amount of revenue is going to be lower than what's in the budget. So the street budget will go down, and the current fund budget will go down, and that's the only change I have right now, unless council has other changes that they want to tell me about for the final budget. So basically, everything's going to stay the same, except those, that property tax amount's going to go down, so...
But at our next council meeting, you can make suggestions to modify, and you can discuss those nuances, and we'll make those as final figures.
And then it has to be approved at our next one?
Yes.
Yeah, really, the only thing that has to be approved is the total, the budget total. So any of the line items can get moved around in any time during the year, but as long as you guys are okay with those budget totals, then that's really what gets approved of type of budget. Any of, any of the line items and how they can all get moved around.
Should have mentioned that at the outset.
That would have, I just thought of that.
And, and this discussion on the $1 salary increase and all of that, will that be discussed again at our meeting on the 13th? Can be. If it's not, then how will that all be resolved?
It'll happen in January. It's the budget, the bottom line, total, it's just where you put the money, how you allocate it.
Will you continue to discuss? Okay, okay.
One last question.
Is the $1 increase that you're proposing already in the budget?
No.
No.
That is not, but the impacting totals are available for you on the paperwork that you've got.
Right. I think probably the key things for the next council meeting with the budget is the fund totals need to be approved to have the budget be approved, and then, and that includes verifying the sewer rate, whether it's going to change, go up or not. So that, that needs to be decided before the end of the year, because that would be implemented as of January 1st if there is a change.
Yeah, that goes along with that same.
So we can't talk about that yet right now? Can we talk about the sewer, the sewer rate increase right now?
Well, we've shifted from the...
You could make a motion to add it to the agenda and discuss it if you want it.
Well, I thought that was to be done before we engage in the official city business. I don't think you can do that.
Oh, you can't, and after, okay.
So we can put it on the next agenda?
Yep.
We'll make sure we do it before the budget approval.
Exactly.
I think that something that we ought to think about this next year is, there's two ways for the city like this to make money. One is property taxes, and two is revenue from businesses. And we need to get some revenue from businesses coming in. So if you have commercial property, turn it into a commercial property and make it, make us some money.
Okay, on that, wise note.
Is that what you plan on doing?
Okay, with that, I'm going to...
We always forget that.
Draw that, delete that.
We're just getting everyone's attention.
Comment time.
My only comment is on, I was hoping for an update on the school zone. There's been another couple near misses, a couple of those mothers are rabid and not happy that they haven't seen a lot of sheriff interaction or police help in that matter. And if we could just get some, some information maybe the next time on how to get that speed zone implicated in some signs and stun gun, I'm open to anything. Slow those people down a little bit, you know? Those kids don't look at anything, they don't look where they're going.
Is that on the state highway?
Yeah.
Those are stop signs.
All right, no comment. Excuse me, we've got to... But we will address that with our next council meeting, that you can achieve. So with that, now, we officially declare this council meeting concluded at 7:05. Thank you.